Yura! Welcome to the launch of Kanara Malara One People, Redlands City Council's internal reconciliation action plan. I'm Christine Cartwright and this is Jonathan Lamb and together we are the co-chairs of the Reconciliation Action Plan Steering Committee. We are proud to have been part of a passionate and collaborative team which came together to develop this rap over the last eight months.
We would like to acknowledge the Kondomooka people, the traditional owners of the land upon which we meet today, and pay respect to elders, past, present and future. We pay special respect to those elders in attendance here this morning, Uncle Bob Anderson and Uncle Norm Enoch. We extend this acknowledgement and respect to other Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples here today.
We would now like to welcome our mayor, CEO, members of ELT, councillors, as well as our past and present NADOC ambassadors here today. And just before we do get started, just some minor housekeeping for everyone present. For emergency purposes, if the alarm sounds, please follow the instruction of the RPA staff and proceed out the emergency exit along this side wall here and up to the grassy knoll. Amenities are up behind you, up by the ramp or the stairs. We will also be serving a light morning tea and refreshments after the official proceedings are complete and we would also like to remind everyone here today that this event is being filmed.
We would now like to invite Uncle Bob to present Welcome to Country.
Thank you very much and Yura, Yura, Karen and Anami Tuju Mobi Rona. Karen and Anami, welcome to this land, part of the Kondomooka cultural estate. And welcome everybody. I make a reference too to Uncle Norm that's present also, other members of the Kondomooka Nation of Nations. And I paid particular respect to my good friend, Mayor Karen Williams and all other people that we seem to be constantly bumping into each other as we make this journey together. I reflect at times on happenings that have impacted on my life. Growing up in East Brisbane, my Aboriginal mother would say to me, be home by dark, always be home by dark. And my mother was born on Karang on country, Butterman Jeruvi call it, South Stradbroke Island translation, and grew up on the Moon Galva Abisal Reserve. My mother's mother was born on the Moon Galva Abisal Reserve and I lived there with my grandmother at the one mile where our community lived 84 years ago. So my journey, my personal journey, has been a very interesting one. And what makes it interesting is that the people that I've met along the journey. I've noticed over the course of my time too that measures have been introduced by governments and dissolved by others that paid respect and acknowledgement to Aboriginal people with the original ones, the first departure from the, we'd say the residue of the state act. And the state act, its formal title was the restriction of the sale of opium and the Aboriginal Protection Act, which governed our lives for almost a century. So people come and people go and it's the goodwill and intent on people that make us, bring us together to, that we make this journey together. It is so important. And with me, I speak as a father, a grandfather, a great-grandfather and uncle to many, as many other members of the Kondomooka Nation of Nations. So again, I pay my respects and thanks to our host, Mayor Karen Williams and other good people too that we celebrate today. I don't think I can say much more, but I would like to say that on the 31st of July, I celebrated my 90th birthday. So I say the quickest score, 90 not out, I'll go for this actually and see how I go. Yura, welcome.
Thank you, Uncle Bob. I would now like to invite our mayor Karen Williams to speak.
Thanks Christine and thanks Jonathan. Yura, good morning everybody. It's so good to be here and it's with great pride that I can stand in front of you today, very proud of the effort of our team here at Redlands City Council. Before I continue however, I would like to start by acknowledging the Kondomooka people, the traditional custodians of the land in which we meet this morning and pay respect to the elders, past, present and emerging in this Kondomooka coast, Kondomooka country where Redlands coast flourishes. The connection to country flows throughout the history of our red soils and our blue seas, without beginning and without end. From generations who walked this land more than 21,000 years ago, to the descendants who will walk these lands in the generations still before us. So with that, I pay respect to the Kondomooka people and all of their elders. But I particularly like to acknowledge our dear friend, Uncle Bob, who's just shared an amazing Welcome to Country as always and of course his partner Cathy Royal, to Uncle Norm, to Josh Walker, the Yuluburri Bae dancers, Alicia Kissick, Kayak Cultural Arts Tourism Events Manager, and to any other Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people who may be in attendance, my councillors that are here today, our councillors, councillor Hewlett, councillor Mitchell, councillor Boglari, councillor Bishop and councillor Hughes. I don't think I've missed anyone. Councillor Talty? Oh hello. So, there you go, councillor Talty, welcome, special welcome. To Andrew Chesterton, the CEO, members of ELT, our incredible RAP committee, NADOC ambassadors, community members and the rest of the team from Redlands City Council. Well, today is certainly a milestone for Redlands City Council and for our beautiful Redlands coast. Reconciliation is a word that we often use, but has different meanings for different people. But at its heart, it means nurturing mutual respect and seeking equality. It's about understanding, both in our knowledge and of course also in our empathy. And understanding that while we move forward, our history actually tells us who we are, who we are as a community, who we are as a nation. And understanding that reconciliation has nothing to do with making everyone exactly the same, but has everything to do with us all knowing is actually okay for us all to be different. So none would argue that that intent is a good one and we aren't always starting with strong foundations, but that is just it. This is a start. It's a meaningful change that starts us with the tangible actions that can help us move forward to achieve tangible outcomes. So our reconciliation journey is still in its very early beginnings despite the great deal of work that's been undertaken in the lead up to and since Kondomooka people's native title determination back in 2011. So it's really fitting that today we have with us some of our elders and Kondomooka representatives who have in fact been and continue to be a crucial part of our reconciliation journey. They have shared with us, they have taught us, they have stood with us. And I particularly like to thank Josh Walker for his continued acts of friendship with our whole organisation and the many years of active involvement and support for this reconciliation process. And I'm sure you all agree that Josh has created something truly special in Kanara Malara. And I'd like you just to acknowledge Josh and the great... But I think it's also really important to acknowledge that this is just the latest testament to Josh's commitment to a strong and beneficial shared future. Also, Uncle Bob provides a forward for our first reconciliation action plan. I've had the great privilege of developing a very sincere and genuine friendship with Uncle Bob. And I firstly want to wish him a very happy 90th birthday, 90 not out, can we say that? For last week. You know, what really impresses people and particularly me about Uncle Bob is he takes everyone on the journey with him. And that is definitely a talent and a skill that we can all learn from. He states his truths quietly and with the ultimate grace. And then it's up to you, us, to make the best use of the knowledge that he sends to us. So our first reconciliation action, reconciliation action plan seeks to emulate this idea that sharing knowledge leads to shared understanding. While no document will have the same eloquence as Uncle Bob, our Kanara Malara rap does seek a similar approach to reconciliation. So we seek to go on this journey together as employees and elected representatives. We seek to gather further truths and increase our knowledge of our shared legacies, the issues and of course the many opportunities. We all seek to be empowered by this important knowledge. And again, it will be up to us as individuals, as an organisation, to make the best use of this knowledge, informing stronger relationships with a shared ambition for prosperity for all living or working on our Redlands coast or Kondomooka country. So I want to take this opportunity to thank the RAP team, the committee that's involved everyone in development of Kanara Malara. And I want to thank you all for your genuine efforts. Thank you. I know... I know it was a labour of love and I'm sure you will all look back on this as an experience that will take you forward in your life. So it's a great excitement and I look forward to seeing this reconciliation action, reconciliation action plan delivered over the next two years. Now of course, we do have to acknowledge 90 not out today, Uncle Bob. So before I hand over to CEO Andrew Chesterton in recognition of Uncle Bob's 90th, I would again like to express our deep and happy birthday wishes to you, Uncle Bob. And we have a small gift for you and if I could just say, over those 90 years, if I think that your, perhaps your pace has slowed, but every footstep that you take, Uncle Bob, leaves an indelible mark on our community and on your people. So thank you so much and a small token of our appreciation, which I'm sure you will enjoy with Cathy if you'd like. I might come to you, that might be easier I think. Shall we sing? Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Uncle Bob. Happy birthday to you.
We'd now like to invite our CEO Andrew Chesterton to present his speech. Thank you.
Well, that's a very hard act to follow, having everyone say happy birthday. I'm going to go a little bit off script here. Can the RAP Steering Committee, everyone who was involved in creating this document, come up here? Because it's on your behalf that I'm actually speaking today. And that includes you too. And so as I come up, can I acknowledge the Kondomooka people, their elders, past, present and emerging and particularly Uncle Bob and Cathy today, Uncle Norm who's here as well, Josh, see you down the back, thank you so much for the work that you've done, the Yuliburri Bae dancers who you'll see later and Alicia Kissick from Kayak I think is here, hello Alicia, and other Torres Strait Islander and Aboriginal people here who are here today. Can I thank the mayor for her words and also welcome councillors, the deputy mayor, councillor Hewlett, councillor Mitchell, councillor Boglari, councillor Bishop and councillor Talty and councillor Hughes, it's great to see you here. Members of the executive leadership team, the reconciliation action plan steering committee right here, our NADOC ambassadors who you can see throughout the room, other employees, ladies and gentlemen. Yura, Maroom Babigi, Yan Danji, Galan Nuna, Gurum Babigi, Mayem, Winbar Duru. So excuse my pronunciation if I've got some of those words wrong, but I've just attempted to say welcome and hello in seven different languages. And they're vastly different from each other and these languages don't come from around the world, but they come from our own nation. And I acknowledge that the words I've just spoken are from the Jendai, Berriu, Wakawaka, Yugura, Miriamur and Gumbuwal dialects. And they make up a fraction of the languages once spoken right across Australia. And so you may wonder why I've chosen to share that with you. Well, I guess it's at the core of why we're here today. And it's an acknowledgement that reconciliation is a process that extends beyond borders, beyond titles and even beyond birthplaces. And for personally, for me, this is about a process of learning and I think our committee would agree, this whole process has been a process of learning. And it's a process that to achieve its full ambition must involve every person who lives in or travels to Redlands coast on Kondomooka country. So Redlands coast has its own unique journey, particularly with the traditional owners of our region and it is indeed one of our biggest opportunities. But it's also important to recognise that we have Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islanders from other parts of Australia who call Redlands coast on Kondomooka country their home or their place of work. And we recognise and value their role in our reconciliation process. So today we gather to officially launch Kanara Malara One People, our internal Redlands City Council reconciliation action plan. It's our first formal internal document setting in place a vision and a set of principles to guide us in our reconciliation efforts. And importantly, it sets realistic actions and gives us timeframes in which to measure our achievements. It's our first rap, but it won't be our last. We see it as a stepping stone to future reconciliation action plans, setting in place for broader external reconciliation activities which will involve our community more broadly. But to do this, we've got to start here, we've got to start now and we start with our organisation and in a way that acknowledges the importance of inclusion in our workplace. We know that Kondomooka people have been custodians of Redlands coast for tens of thousands of years. We also know that others in our community are living off country and facing challenges of past legacies. Outside traditional owners, we also know non-indigenous members of our community are seeking a shared understanding. We know there's learning to be done and traditions to be shared. And as an organisation, I know that the work we've done with our traditional owners on a host of projects includes things like our art exhibitions, cultural displays, events and tourism, economic development, wildlife conservation, bush care and even more recently disaster management, just to name a few. Stronger relationships and shared understanding can only benefit and strengthen this important work undertaken for the benefit of all, our community. And so do Kanara Malara. And when you read Kanara Malara One People, our rap, you'll see it sets a range of actions. And they're included under a series of deliverables that include understanding the journey, raising cultural awareness, fostering a culturally inclusive workplace, strengthening connections and tracking progress and setting some next steps. And so some actions might seem small and others more complex, but all work towards a common goal. And woven together, they create a powerful process of change. And so I do want to thank the RAP Steering Committee here for taking the organisation's vision and putting it into action. I don't underestimate the complexity of putting this plan together and you've done a remarkable job, so well done again. And I also want to thank those in our community that have helped us. Josh certainly has helped us along the way, Uncle Bob, Uncle Norm, Cameron Costello, all of whom supported this process with great generosity. And to have such support reassures us that we're heading in the right direction. I also want to thank our NADOC ambassadors who are present here today, who actually helped build the swell of momentum to lead our first reconciliation action plan and make it a reality. It was soon after joining council in 2017 that I was overcome with the momentum, in this room actually, that saw our very own employees seek to understand more about an enduring and living culture that was not taught in my generation at school. And it was then that I committed as your new CEO back then with council support to commence and champion the process of developing this first reconciliation action plan for our organisation. And I'm really proud to be here today to help launch something so important. So you'll soon hear the story of Kanara Malara as told by Josh and in this piece of storytelling, you'll begin to understand the incredible depth of thought that's gone into the symbolism in this painting here. So I won't preempt it, but I do want to just bring one thing to light about the story, which I'm not sure will be told. And it's, it does involve the story of the kangaroo and the emu, which is on the Australian coat of arms. And some may be aware that the reason they were chosen to be on the coat of arms was because neither animal can move backwards. And they are symbols of standing with strength and not taking a step backwards and facing challenges head on. And so now they're forever part of our reconciliation journey. And so just like the emu and the kangaroo, we too can now only move forward. So thank you all for being here today and welcome to Kanara Malara.
I would now like to invite Josh Walker, Kondomooka traditional owner and creator of the reconciliation artwork Kanara Malara One People, to share the story of the artwork.
Well, thank you. It's good to be here this morning. I've had a pretty mild winter, so I'm glad about that. So the art piece Kanara Malara One People, it's a piece that I created obviously for the reconciliation action programme, but I guess you could say that I am a product of reconciliation. My mother was a Scottish Irish woman, or was, and my father was Aboriginal man of Kondomooka. So I actually represent both camps, both people, my Celtic heritage and my indigenous heritage. And so, as you can see, a lot of thought has gone into the creation of this art piece. But it has the four colours, which are the four sacred colours of our culture, as you see. So the colours are, from the beginning when I start the canvas, I use black background because black represents the colour of the eternal void of nothingness. And from, out of that comes colour, light and creation. So in a Christian sense, you might say black also could represent hell, right, the underworld. Okay. Then the next colour we have is most strikingly opposite of black is the white, which represents purity, the creator, Bayami, the bright white creator light. Then we have the two colours of red and yellow. Red is the colour of men, for the men have to shed blood to feed the tribe when they kill kangaroo or emu and also spilling blood in the defence of the tribe. And so that's why red is the colour of men. Yellow is the colour of women because it represents life giving. One interesting fact, if you soak any of these colours in water, only the yellow colour, only the yellow ochre will have an explosion of bacterial life, which is then obviously followed by odour. Okay? So that's why yellow is the colour for women because it is life giving. Now, the symbolism, we have the red line markings, that represents the land. All of the Redlands area, Kondomooka country, is represented by the red lining. The yellow circles, that represents the sands and the seas, the waters of the Kondomooka people. So we are also collectively known as Yuluburri Bae or Yuluburri, which means the sand and water folks, the people of the sands and the waters. So now we also have, in the middle there, we have this circle in the middle, the two circles on either sides. So we have, on one side we have the camp with yellow, on the other side the camp with red. The camp with the red has the yellow windbreak around it, which is the opposite colour, which represents the camp having empathy for the other side. The circle in the middle is where three delegates from each side have come and joined in the middle to discuss their future reconciliation and how they will work together to move forward. But keeping in mind that the opposite shades representing the empathy, so that both camps are thinking about the other camps and having the empathy for them, otherwise the process can't move forward. Then we have the serpent on each side, top and bottom, we have the serpent shapes. The serpents represent the wisdom. In the beginning, when Bayami, the bright white creator light, created earth world, he placed Bujangi, the rainbow serpent mother, the wise one who knows everything, who resides in the underworld. So that's why the serpents represent wisdom and also the first language and the first law. Then we have the kangaroo and the emu tracks, as you can see there. So as we all know, as was mentioned earlier, the kangaroo and the emu represents the coat of arms of Australia and they are animals that only move forward. They also happen to be the main animals of our marriage kinship system, the very foundations of our law. And so in our marriage system, all tribes across Australia are split into two halves which marry into one another and police one another with equally weighted law. And the, and the relationship is governed by three sacred laws. You can never fight with your in-laws, otherwise you will dishonour your own family. You can't even swear in the presence of your in-laws, so you must talk in a civilised manner and maintain proper respect, otherwise you shame and dishonour your family. And the third law, you can't say no to your in-laws, you must help and share with them. If someone of your in-law comes to you and they ask you for help, you can't say no to them, you can't turn them away. And these three laws are reciprocal. And so that way, failing to reciprocate will also create trouble. And ones who have not reciprocated in a correct manner will then be disciplined by someone of their own family. Because you're more ready to receive discipline from your own family than you are from your in-laws. So that is the reason why our elders have created this social structure, the system of marriage, dispute resolution systems are all set in place by the foundations of the kinship system under the emu and the kangaroo. And so because I am descended from the carpet snake, totem ancestor, the carpet snake is brother of emu, so I belong to the emu. And being a matrilineal society, we take our totem sides from our mother. So my Scottish Irish mother is adopted into the emu side because she married my father who belonged to the kangaroo side. And so that's the way we structure relationships when other cultures marry into our families, that's the way they are adopted in. Because in the way of our kinship system, everybody has to have a skin name, everybody has to have, belong to either the emu or the kangaroo, otherwise they don't fit in. And also, as was mentioned, the coat of arms, many of our people, indigenous and non-indigenous Australians and not forgetting the New Zeoniders, the Anzacs, okay? So they all fought in the wars and it also acknowledges that brothers in arms from indigenous and non-indigenous Australia have come together in the defence of our nation and not forgetting the women. My grandmother Ujuru was a Lance Corporal in World War II and her two brothers were prisoners of war in Singapore. So our family has paid a heavy toll in the defence of this nation, as many other families have. But nonetheless, through the reconciliation action programme and the process of the reconciliation, acknowledging all of the struggles that our families have gone through in the past and uniting together for a glad tomorrow in the future. Thank you.
We'd like to now invite and welcome the Yuliburri Bae dancers to perform for us.
Thank you. The next steps we are going to do is called Kapur, which is the carpet snake. And as I mentioned earlier, that is the totem ancestor that we descend from. So the carpet snake is very important to our family and because it's our ancestor, we hold that carpet snake sacred. We never ever harm the carpet snake in any way. In fact, we have a few that live in our shack with us and we've always had the carpet snakes ever since my children were newborns, they'd come home to the shack and the eight-foot carpet snake there. So they're quite an integral part of our family. And we also remind other Aboriginal tribes, indigenous peoples, if they hunt carpet snake, they should only do so when the native passion fruit is in flower. Kapur, dance of the carpet snake. Kapur, dance of the carpet snake. Thank you. The next dance we're going to do before we finish with the farewell is, of course, would have to be Buankan, which is the other totem ancestor of the Kwandamooka people, the dolphin. So the dolphin is also sacred to Kwandamooka peoples, being another totem ancestor. Many families are descended from the dolphin also. So the dolphin and carpet snake are the two main totems of our peoples. And this dance also celebrates how our people would call out to the dolphins to help in the fishing in the old days. We have, we used to have a very close relationship with the dolphins, in so much as they would actually do the fishing for us, pretty much. So the whole tribe would go down to the water's edge and strike the waters and stomp their feet to send the vibration out to the dolphins, and they would always respond by driving the shoals of fishes into our nets. And that way, we could catch large amounts of fish very quickly. But always after the catch, we would give some fish to the dolphins to thank our brothers and sisters of the sea for helping us in the fishing. Calling up the dolphin, Buankan. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to finish with the farewell song. And we always finish with the farewell song and dance to acknowledge everyone's spiritual ancestors in the sky country, as we call it, and also to say farewell. In our language for farewell, we say yue. Yue. Thank you.
Thank you, Yulubarabai dancers. Actually, Josh, before you head off, we'd like to give you a small token of appreciation for the incredible contribution you've made to our reconciliation action plan and the wonderful artwork. So thank you very much.
We would like to thank everyone who came here this morning to celebrate the launch of council's first internal reconciliation action plan.
We look forward, as I'm sure all of you do, to progressing the actions in this reconciliation action plan and building stronger relationships in our workplace and the community at the next phase of our reconciliation journey. So thank you for coming this morning. We'd like to assemble everybody here for official photographs on the steps, and then we'll have refreshment shortly afterwards. So if you wouldn't mind gathering over towards the steps. Thank you.